Call this meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Perez.
Our Father, our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. In thy name we come, all we know, and worship the Lord. Let us just say our good will be free from trespass against us. We is not temptation, but love is from evil. Ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to whom thy Father, for which he stands, one nation, under God, in the best of liberty and justice across the world.
Any public comments?
No.
Communications?
Just one. The minutes are minute there at one a.m. for Christmas in the city on Saturday, December 5th. Two to six, forty-five, ten, in downtown Tamaulipas. Really craft and activities. Also hopefully a parade at six o'clock from Jefferson to Liberty.
Okay. Any questions or concerns? I, we had a chat about this. I think you said they are required to have their own COVID plan and have that ready in case people or someone inquires. They need to have that in place, not necessarily for our purposes, but for their purposes, to make sure that they're in compliance. So is there, other than, there is a amount, dollar amount that this is going to cost. Did you say the final amount was, it's like? I don't see that here right now. So it's a police cost of $480, Bureau of Maintenance for setup and whatnot, fourteen twenty-five seventy-one, and DPW two seventy-six forty-two. So that exceeds the threshold, but we can still approve that if we'd like to, so.
How about the, maybe you may have the answer. Handling the electricity, I see they want electricity, but I'm just concerned about how people trip on all the vehicles for Christmas in the city.
I think that, I think the electricity is for the judging stand or the announcing stand. They have like a PA system there?
If that's, if it's just for that judging thing, historically what it gets better.
Yep, that's usually the only place I've seen it. I mean, there is really no other, other than normal street lights, right? Just a decorative thing.
We do it every turn?
Yeah, we do. But it's not. I'm just letting you know that there is a cost and this is different than normally, if it's under the cost, it's just.
No, but he was just saying, what's the problem with the electricity and stuff?
Oh, yeah.
The application is specifically to the flatbed judging station. So we pull the electric out of where the Christmas tree is. It's kicked down onto the sidewalk.
And it says near the Christmas tree location.
Yeah, that's where the power drop.
So are we in consensus to move that forward?
Yes.
It basically is just approved. We don't really move it to a business meeting for a vote. It's just approved. Okay. The next council business meeting will be held Tuesday, October thirteenth, 2020, 7:00 p.m. City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. City manager position update. So as you know, we've been, well, you may not know, so I'll make that announcement now. Since June twentieth, council's been working pretty much at every meeting and every, sometimes special meetings, towards the search process for replacing the city manager who left approximately that time. Due to private and personal information, council is ethically and legally bound to safeguard that information. So there has been limited information up until this point, but now I have some information going forward. We have, council has appointed a screening slash search committee of the following members, which are Patty Pacino, John Canelli, Matt Worth, and Dawn Fairbanks will be pretty much the liaison for making sure that human resources is involved as per the city's hiring practices. So Dawn will be helping to schedule things and help you guys stay coordinated, passing information on and whatnot. Within the next few weeks, she is in contact with a professional search firm, Novak, and we will be, in the next few weeks, we will be advertising for those job descriptions in the, within the city employees, within the city and local community, as well as nationally. It will be based on per section five dash one of the city charter, which is the job descriptions for the city manager, which is our, which are the minimum descriptions. The actual description may include some additional things as necessary as per council request. Also, it'll be per section five dash three of the city charter, which is the general powers and duties of the city manager. So all these things in the next few weeks will be compiled and advertisements will go out and we will solicit applications and continue forward with the process. So at this point, that's pretty much all we can release at this point, so we know more about the future announcements and things like that, which will be coming as they are ready to be sent out. Any questions from council?
Audit presentation, Fried, Maxick, Laura Landis. You've been provided a PowerPoint type presentation. We're not going to do the PowerPoint because of the moving and walking around the room.
So she's going to do it and you can handle the actual, so you can follow through.
Thank you so much, council. And as council president said, that I handed out what typically would be the PowerPoint that I would put up there, and that is some historical information charts and also bail sheet of the three major funds of the city, the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. So to start off with kind of my summary of our, we conducted an audit of the basic financial statements of the city of Batavia for the year ending March thirty-first, 2020, and have issued our report within the financial statements, which are dated September sixteenth of 2020. We met and reviewed in August in detail the financial statements with the city's audit advisory committee. We have issued an unmodified, or what we call a clean opinion, on the city's financial statements, which is typically what we have done in the past. During the current year, the city did implement one governmental accounting standard board statement, that was a work which dealt with fiduciary activities. The impact of this statement resulted in a restatement of the beginning year acquisition for the general fund. And under Gatsby's statement number eight-four, the city performed an analysis of activities that had previously been recorded in the city's agency fund, and determined activities and balances that should be recorded in now the new custodial fund under Gatsby eight-four. And there were, upon the analysis of these balances and transactions, determined that there were some that will now have to be recorded in the general fund. What this resulted in is a restatement, as I said, in the general fund, which increased the general fund fund balance in the amount of eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars at the beginning of the year. This standard had no significant impact on the water and sewer funds of the city. So the first slide is the general fund, excess, loss from operations. Operations of the general fund for the year ending March thirty-first, 2020, resulted in revenues of sixteen million, seven hundred and forty-seven thousand, four thirty-nine, which includes other financing sources, which are mainly a percent from other funds, and expenditures of seventeen million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, which includes other financing uses, which are transfers out. The majority of those transfers out related to transfers to the health insurance or the insurance fund, which covers your, the city's health insurance and workers' comp claims. And a resulted in a deficit of revenues over expenditures of seven hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and one. And I'll speak a little bit later among the slides, but the majority of that deficit was really related to outside of a planned appropriation of your fund balance to use when you adopted your nineteen twenty budget. This deficit decreased fund balances of the general fund to a total of seven million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, five oh two. The city ended the nineteen twenty year with an unassigned fund balance of one million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, six ninety-nine. That's exclusive of restrictions of assignments. So that's the amount that council can utilize for whatever purposes they choose to utilize it for, utilize it to appropriate in next year's budget process, or for any particular unanticipated expenditures that might arise. During the current year, the city's actual revenues were slightly under budget and expenditures were under budget by about one point four million. The budgetary comparison schedule, which has this information, can be found on page sixty-four of the audited financial statements. And management continues to monitor expenditures, and particularly this year, as the city moves forward through the current environment and is doing analysis regarding cash flows, you know, routinely to make sure that there is sufficient cash for operations for the city as we move through this pandemic. The next slide, which shows the actual revenues and expenditures, you see that for, this is for fiscal years twenty-eleven through twenty-twenty, and that revenues exceeded expenditures except for in twenty fifteen, twenty seventeen, and this current year, which ascended March thirty-first of twenty twenty. During the current year, the city utilized reserves to fund equipment purchases, sidewalk improvements, healthcare claims, and information technology improvements in the amount of approximately one million, and funded reserves in the amount of about one hundred and fourteen thousand. The city has continued to fund various reserves in an effort to stabilize tax rates, provide for replacement of equipment and infrastructure, thereby reducing reliance on issuing debt and provide for payment of future liabilities. Based on the recommendations from the audit advisory committee and the uncertainty in the current economic climate, there were no amounts assigned by the interim city manager to fund reserves from fund balance for the fiscal year ending March thirty-first, 2020. They just thought that it was prudent, given the uncertainty of what, we don't know what's going to happen, to just keep that unassigned fund balance there in case the city council needs to utilize it for whatever purpose they, you know, unanticipated expenditures that may occur. The next slide, which really goes into the breakdown of the fund balances at the end of twenty-eleven through twenty-twenty, but I wanted to just give you more detail on this, and also that this, this information can be found in the footnotes to the financial statements that I'm going to be reading off to you. So the twenty twenty year ended, the fund balances, as I said, a total of seven million, eight hundred and ninety-three thousand, five oh two. That's broke down into assigned and unassigned, which is two million, three hundred and fifteen thousand, eight fifty-five, and restricted, non-spendable, and committed, five million, five seventy-seven, six forty-seven. So that restricted, there is restricted for insurance, which is a little over seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand. You have restricted for capital projects of a little over three point six million. Restricted for employee benefits accrued liability, that's for any payouts of sick time, palm retirement, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, restricted for retirement contributions. That's to help offset if there's any significant increase from the state retirement or retirement contributions that you could dip into that reserve and not have to take it out of your unassigned fund balance. And that balance is three hundred and thirty-two thousand. Restricted for the wider state in repairs, a little over thirty-six thousand. And just restricted for others, which is third-party restrictions on monies that have come into the city, which is about three hundred and three thousand. There's a small amount, a little over a thousand dollars, that's restricted for debt service, and that's just money that was left over from bond proceeds that was not spent for projects that needs to be utilized to pay down the debt service. Signed for encumbrances, well, go back to committed. Committed fund balance at the end of the year was a little over two hundred and fourteen thousand. Now, these are monies that are committed by the council, this government board, and can be uncommitted by this council. And that two hundred and fourteen thousand is committed for master plan, habitat, architect plans, electric trail, and creek park, and by Batavia. There is no money, as I just spoke about, that has been assigned for funding of reserves. Assigned to balance the subsequent year's budget, which would be the twenty twenty-one budget, is two hundred and fifty-nine thousand. And as I stated before, the unassigned fund balance is one million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, six ninety-nine. Now, the city does have a fund balance policy, and this unassigned fund balance is within the city's fund balance policies that currently stands as of March thirty-first, 2020. So I understand the city has updated their fund balance policy, that was in June, but this one million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, six ninety-nine does comply with the city's internal fund balance policy at March thirty-first, 2020. The general fund, just overall, looking at the, the next page, it shows a balance sheet. General fund, as I said, ended the year with a deficit of revenues over expenditures of seven hundred and eighty thousand, nine oh one. This deficit really was a result of a couple of different things. The city's recognizing the city center as an asset of the city, a disability retirement settlement, and several high-value health insurance claims, which increased the amount that is transferred from the general fund to the self-insurance fund of the city, where claims are being paid, as I said, for health insurance and workers' comp. So a couple of different things there. Overall, the balance sheet of the city presents strong cash and cash equivalents, and also strong fund balances, especially still in the restricted areas and the unassigned areas. The next slide relates to the city's water fund. The water fund has generated an operating surplus again in the current year. This is an indication that current rates continue to be at levels which have supported the operations of this fund. The water fund ended the current year with an operating surplus in the amount of a little over one point three million, before operating, non-operating revenues and expenses, and the operating subsidy to the general fund, which all of those totaled about five hundred and sixteen thousand. Net cash position of the water fund increased by a little over a million. Part of that increase relates to that there was an anticipation note that was issued in the current year, but this resulted in cash at the end of the year of a little over three point eight million, which does not include the cash that's restricted for capital projects. So that's totally, that three point eight million is unrestricted cash in the water fund at the end of the year. So overall, the water fund, good cash balances, strong net position, both in the restricted and in the unrestricted, net position of that fund. The last slide is, relates to the sewer fund. The sewer fund ended the current year with an operating surplus in the amount of about seventy-four thousand, before non-operating revenue and expenses, and an operating subsidy to the general fund, which all of that totaled about one hundred and forty-one thousand. Net cash position of the sewer fund decreased about three hundred and nineteen thousand. However, the cash balance at the end of the year, net of cash restricted for capital projects was a little over five million. So still healthy cash position in the sewer fund, healthy net position in the sewer fund restricted of about three point nine, and unrestricted of about six point seven. So the city's enterprises, enterprise funds are doing well as of, as of March thirty-first. And, you know, in conversations that I've had with Rachel, you know, that was one of, one of the concerns as, as we moved through the COVID, is whether there was going to be some kind of fall-off in operating revenues for the water and sewer, or maybe late payments. And Rachel said that they really, really haven't seen any of that, so I would expect that, you know, the position, the cash position and net position of the water and sewer funds will continue to be strong going into twenty twenty-one then. We also issued a management report. We had no, no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses reported to the council as a result of our audit. So that management report is there, and there's some other comments in there. One of them was the actuarial evaluation, which management has consulted with their third-party administrator, and will be performing that, I believe that will be this, in the twenty twenty-one year, right? Rachel, thank you. July twenty twenty-one. Yeah, July twenty twenty-one, right. They just felt that having five years of historical information will give them a better baseline to be able to have a, a good valuation, which the city can look at and say, okay, these are where we should be having our reserves related to our self-under workers' comp. So, any questions? Overall, I think, you know, as of March thirty-first, 2020, you know, the general fund, the major funds of the city are still in, in good position, and I think that, that management is taking the right, the right moves as far as monitoring cash flows, controlling expenditures, you know, utilizing reserves that you can use, also utilizing, if there's anything that is major, to issue debt, because debt is so cheap right now as far as the interest rates on debt. So if there is something that you could issue debt for, that, you know, that might, that, that just gives you another tool in your toolbox as the, as the council to go to as far as a funding source.
Any questions?
Well, I'd like to thank council. This is, this will be my last council meeting. I'm retiring at the end of this year, so my partner Catherine Barrett will be taking over for me. She is my partner in the, in the governmental practice unit. So, but I, I've thoroughly enjoyed the, the number of years that I have come and worked with the council and worked with the city through, through a lot of lean times and, and how, good times, and, and hopefully into the future, so, thank you.
Actually, really interesting year, because we're going to, still I realize how they know what's going to affect us in the fall, so. Stipend resolution. I requested this to be put on there. Based on section five dash four of the city charter, under assistant manager section, it says there shall be an assistant manager, and it, and it basically outlines the duties, and one of them is perform the duties of the manager during the manager's absence or inability to act, or during a vacancy in the office of the manager. I was, when I read that, I looked at that as more of a temporary solution. You know, someone's on vacation, someone's out for, you know, an injury or something like that. In this case, Rachel's been doing this since June twentieth. I figured a month is a reasonable period of time, but since July twentieth, it's now getting into prolonged period of time. And in the past, when we had people fill in, they did that, they were given a stipend. So I requested the exact same wording from the last time that we had Matt fill in and get a stipend. The reason is, Rachel, in a sense, is still running the administrative section of the city, like a city manager assistant would, and she's taking on all the additional duties of the assistant manager. Some of her duties have been spread to other employees, which were the same the last time we did this. I felt that it was only fair that we offer her the same stipend as was given to others in the past in the same circumstances. So that's why I put this on there for your consideration. Any comments or discussion?
I think you're, I agree, you're right. When someone's doing additional services and stuff like that, and we're doing this for other people, let's be consistent, I agree. I support it.
I agree with you in terms of, well, I think it's a well deserved, it should be done.
Yeah, she's taking on the responsibility.
Okay, so are we in consensus to move this to the business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved over. Habitat for Humanity, Fifty Oak Street.
Thank you, council president. Tonight we have before you a memo, resolution, and a request from Habitat for Humanity for the transfer of the property of Fifty Oak Street to Habitat. The city has a rich history of working with Habitat for Humanity in bringing properties on the sort of homeless back to life, getting single-family homes, single families back in those homes, and increasing the tax value of those homes. They did send us a letter at my request. The process had started pre-COVID with the previous manager, and then when COVID hit, it kind of fell by the wayside, so I started working with the director again. They've done Sixth Manhattan Avenue, just some of the recent examples, Forty-Five Clifton, One Sixteen Swan, and then they talk about the improvements they want to do at Fifty Oak Street. So they'd like to invest between fifty-eight to sixty-two thousand dollars in the foreclosed property, and to renovate it and get it back in the hands of a family to live there.
Good.
They work over, the fans work over four hundred hours to rehead some of these homes. Now, because Clifton Avenue is in my ward and the Swan Street, those are two hundred and one new homes that are being built, and one is almost occupied right now. It's a great organization, and the majority of the people that do the work there are women, and you would be surprised what they do. You have no idea, you should see it sometime. Take the time to see it. That's it.
Actually, one of my houses, after I sold it, fell into disrepair and ended up as a Habitat home, so I, I was able to look at it when it was totally torn out, and they go right down to studs and bare bones when they start to build it up. It's basically a new house. So it's a great, it's a great organization.
I've had to repair several of the homes in the process, and one thing in front of my apartment wall, the Swan Street, once you get in this flood, you mind this whole wall, it's just, you know, I mean, and every house can be different from elevations and all that, so I think it's, it's, they did a great job, and I said, you know, they hired you, so I figured out, this is my donation to help out, he was, he was using steel forms and everything.
Housing is, housing is in demand in the city, so anytime we can rehab a house, get it back on the market for someone to live in, it's a positive thing, so. So are we in consensus to move this to the business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved over. Undercode software.
Thank you, Council President. The X-Men one resolution we have before you is still, is still in process of negotiating the final pieces of this and the final piece, but I wanted to get it before you. We had talked about it at the previous meeting. This is phase two of the IT software conversion that the city is undergoing. Phase one, council approved back on August twelfth of twenty nineteen for about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The financial management, the HR and the utility billing portions of the software, we're on page seventeen, just so everybody's aware. This phase will, the cost will be no more than two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Like I said, we're still negotiating the final pieces of the software that they will need. The software will be used by the Bureau of Inspections and it'll be replacing the software they currently use now. Funding is in place through a fan that was approved back in twenty eighteen for a total project cost of eight hundred thousand dollars. So this is another component piece of the software project. The software is for planning permitting and licensing. And it does have a GIS automated component to it. And again, as we get into each of these softwares, we basically try to buy the, the quote we have in front of us has everything in it. We need to modify that. We need to go back and, and start with the bare bones. So when we come back with you, it'll have a final price on it that'll be less than the two hundred and forty thousand. And then as we move through the software, sometimes there are additions and changes, as Heidi knows, she's laughing at me, that we do add on. So I just want to get in front of you tonight, if there's any further questions. I wasn't here when we demoed the software, so all of it's kind of new to me and all very, very interesting, but looking forward to moving to phase two of this project timeline. It was, we would secure council approval this fall and start the implementation and building of it in January with the Bureau of Inspection in the Metro Department.
So this is basically to start that process, so when you have the final figure, you'll bring it to the business meeting.
Yeah, I can bring it to the business.
Not necessarily the next business meeting, but it'll be a business meeting when they, and they have all the final numbers. Just, we need to get this kind of started so it's ready to go and they are ready to go, so we can get it going.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, so are we in consensus to moving this, not necessarily the next business meeting, to a future business meeting, at least within two weeks or longer, so that the public has a chance to weigh in? And that will be brought back at a later business meeting when we have a chance to get the final figures. So we're in consensus to move that forward. The I-1 ordinance change for public roads.
Good evening, House members. This is the, the beginning of the end, if you will, in the Houston Churchill quote. So speak of the long course and road of, of creating a change to the local laws. So this specific item relates back to a petition by Mr. Biscaro on Eloquent Street to allow public repair garages in industrial I-1 zones. It has gone through the city's planning development committee with recommendations to allow it. It's since been sent to county planning. They've reviewed it and responded back that they saw no adverse condition with approving it in this fashion. So the next step is to schedule a public hearing and to lay the law out for review by the public. And so the comments can be received back, so then the next stage would be a secret environmental review and then after that, it's going to be city council to vote to make it a local law.
Any questions?
No, I just, all of the, my colleagues were in agreement with this, if I could talk. And I'm going to thank you for all the work that you've put into this because it was really a delight. Thank you.
And this is a- Any law changes that requires all this extra work? Bob, did you want?
Yeah, Matt, so what was helping the board to think for some more use of somebody's service?
Well, it's, you know, the industrial zones, I remember we've had a couple issues where for some reason I just don't think they get a lot of attention and it's a detail part of it. It certainly makes all the sense in the world for an industrial zone, you know, a lot of the, you know, garage, repair garages. So it seems to be a good fit and hopefully, certainly, a lot of these areas are, are open. They have open space. You know, there's, there's large warehouse type buildings that are well suited to do that type of work, so I certainly think it's advantageous without question. And it probably makes a little more sense that some of the commercial designations, it's allowed in the C two, where it can be a little bit tighter and, you know, like different commercial operations that might not be best to have is a garage right next door. So maybe, you know, I think it checks some boxes that way.
Matt, I remember in our last discussion before we went on to the next step, every time one of these requests comes up, there is a request then for a special use permit? Is that correct?
That is correct. So in the commercial zones that is already allowed, there's also a special use permit condition with that as there is in the industrial. So the special use permit really is an opportunity for the planning board to say, okay, it's generally allowed in this area, but let's make sure that if there's any special conditions that need to be met, that it's an opportunity for them to put those conditions in that special use permit. So it's kind of a belt suspenders, you know, approach to making sure that it fits the neighborhood.
So, so they're allowed, but under scrutiny, so to make sure that they're gonna fit?
Yeah, so they have to go through the planning board, you know, what the C board did, whether they're doing it, and then you get that special argument to lobby operating there.
And just be aware, we will vote on this at the next business meeting, which will then officially schedule the public hearing at seven PM on Monday at a conference meeting on the twenty-sixth of October. So our first meeting in October will be the official business meeting, vote on this, and the meeting will be scheduled for the following meeting, which will be a conference meeting. And then after that will be the public hearing. And then we'll go for the next step.
Yeah, if everything follows, I think actually December is when you'll actually have to get it adopted.
That's when we actually vote on the law change itself, will be a couple of meetings down the road. Okay, so this will be the public hearing. So are we in favor to move the vote to schedule the public hearing to the next business meeting?
Yes.
Is that in consensus to move that as well? Thank you very much. Matt, are you up for the, the next one? I want to know if you're all those buckets.
Hey, and the contractor thinks, I think that SD one I mentioned at the last meeting, I think that's gonna resolve as well. So during the construction of the new roof, or not the construction, the repair replacement of the new roof on the city center, as they removed the old roof and they came across several areas where the decking was severely deteriorated, the contractor had to put new deck material down. We went, went up, reviewed it. It wasn't just spot repairs, it was larger things over three thousand square feet of deck that had to be replaced. So we negotiated a reasonable price with the contractor as well as reviewing some other ways to be cut the cost of the project. And when all the pluses and minuses and everything else that had been approved, there's a requirement for additional five thousand dollars to be appropriated out of the facility reserve to close out the project and that will cover all the costs of the added deck repair that was completed as part of the project. We were not able to come to council before this because it was something that was, you know, we were discovering it as the roof was being removed and it had to be repaired and, and replaced at that time and completely new open. So that's why council, coming to council a little after the fact than what we would normally like to. But this will essentially close the project completely out and then we can get ready to start moving on to the next phases of the city center.
So this is just, so it's a five thousand dollar difference after all the balancing and crediting, it's five thousand dollar difference?
Yeah, the actual cost of all the work was, I believe, twenty-seven thousand dollars on the deck repair, but we had some credits in there that we were able to find. We had approved some monies through council already for, there were change orders. So when it's all said and done, it's, it's five thousand dollars. And there was a little bit of asbestos abatement work that was above what we thought as well that was a very small amount. And the intent is we hopefully want to use all five thousand dollars.
Great. Are all the leaks now fixed? Because you, you, you know, of course-
The only section of the roof that was not removed and replaced is the area right in front of Penny's and then what we call the Dan's Tire Hallway. All the rest of the roof has been repaired or replaced and those buckets are all done. The leaks have all been repaired. The couple items, we had the down cores after it was replaced, the contractor's come back, did a little, you know, research, tried to find where there was maybe a seam that was open or something, made those repairs. And as of me speaking right now, I'm not aware of anything that is a problem or a leak under where the new roof was installed.
So time wise, how much warranty do we have?
I think ideally we'll be looking at some of the DRI projects to do that, that section by Penny's and the Dan's hallway to do that. And again, there's an obligation that's part of the settlement agreement with the merchants.
What's the warranty and work that's-
Oh, I'm sorry, warranty, full year warranty.
Is that a full or do we have to pay labor and?
No, no, those are full warranties. Actually, that's the last item that closed the project out. The warranty company, which this is a car lab roof, so the manufacturer comes out and does a final inspection, certifies the warranty, issues a number to it. Your warranty is actually through the manufacturer, not the local contractor. It didn't work.
Good, thank you. It seemed like a long time, but we, we finally were able to find the money, get it scheduled and get it done. So I'm glad to hear going into winter that's gonna be okay. So it's been, what, like thirty years or so? It's been a long time since, at least six or seven years that I've been involved in it from day one, almost. So thank you very much, Matt. So in this case, we want to move that amendment to the budget to the next business meeting for that five thousand dollar expenditure. Are we all in consensus to do that?
Yes.
Okay, that gets moved over. Surplus of vehicles, Matt?
So we have three vehicles, two public works, one is actually a fire department unit that are being replaced this year. The two vehicles are actually out of the sewer fund. So the request is to, to declare those light on surplus and then the city will auction them off and the fund will go back into the sewer reserve, put in a replacement reserve. And then the old command vehicle from the fire department, who's actually the, the fire chief, we just included that instead of giving you two different resolutions, we just, we all the surplusing in one. Again, that will go to auction and then any fund will go into the fire department, put in reserve.
Okay, and you're okay with that, chief?
I am.
Hundred miles. I know we kind of lumped it in, but I'd like to make sure that you're all over.
I am in so many ways.
I noticed it said it was seriously, the frame is extensive corrosion. We've had that vehicle lost, so.
The body is, I'd actually, the vehicle, fire vehicle?
The Durango, yeah. Hundred, hundred miles for it?
Yeah, I'd actually, it's even, right, it's just- The Durango, close to seventy thousand miles on it. And then the, the body and the frame, the body and the frame just did not fare well with the, the winter conditions that we have here. It's, it's, it's used as a fleet vehicle, it was used as a command vehicle, and we were probably putting about three hundred and fifty dollars a month in it to keep it viable. We've replaced it, as you know, with the new command vehicle, the Ford Explorer, so.
It's, it was just eleven, there's no doubt about it. Eleven-year-old vehicle, seventy thousand miles. You're gonna scrap it, just?
It'll go to auction. It's a good value.
It gets hard used.
I mean, it's, it does- No, it rusted out. I mean, I have a two thousand seven Subaru Rode that just rusted out. It gets driven in the same salt and everything. It's just every now and then you get one that, did they drive it out of the dealership and starts falling apart?
For full disclosure, it's been a recycled vehicle too. Came from the police department. A hot boy. Passed the buck. So it did, we did use it. I think the council president, if I had drove it, I would have.
I probably drove it like I stole it and that's probably the reason. Can't drive them things too hard. All right, anything else on that, Matt? Okay, so are we in consensus to move that surplus resolution over to the next business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, that one's over too. Street lighting proposal.
So this is an issue that the public works department's been working on really for probably about two years, looking at, at ways to be more efficient with the city's street lighting system. And we looked at, the, the city's streetlight system is really split into two different systems. We have the city-owned street lighting, which is essentially all of the main arterial, Route ninety-eight, sixty-three, Route five, and then all the residential is owned by National Grid. And we've looked at different methods to try and, and make it more efficient and less costly to the, to the payers. And what we found is the public service commission and some of the regulations that you have to go through to try to obtain the private or the, the utility-owned street lighting system or to depreciate it out so you can replace it with, with newer, higher efficient fixtures, is somewhat, I don't know if I want to say convoluted, but it can be very difficult and there's a little bit of lack of confidence in what that cost actually is and whether the city is receiving fair value to go that route. So we really kind of backed off and looked strictly at the, the street lighting that is already owned by the city. And we engaged with the New York Power Authority, which is a non-for-profit entity through New York State that operates, you know, the power grid throughout the state along with several other things. And one of their other missions is to provide low-cost energy solutions for municipalities along the way. And they have a program where they will take all of the city-owned street lighting, so all of the arterials, change out the fixture head to an LED head, so it won't be the, the yellowish, you know, color of the high-pressure sodiums, to a less expensive power usage LED light that will be the white light. And through the savings in the energy, it pays the cost of the project, which is over half million dollars with the financing costs that go with it. As it's proposed right now, it would take fourteen years to recover all of that cost to pay off the debt to the project. And at that point, then your savings becomes about forty thousand dollars a year and you have a brand-new street lighting system throughout the city. So all the fixtures are new, so your, your O and M cost should be reduced, your quality of light should be improved and the energy consumption is less. The is, the, kind of the, the attractiveness of this program is NIPA really offers a turnkey program. So your staff's so lean right now, it's very difficult for us to dedicate time to hire contractors, to engage with the consultants and try to do this on our own. NIPA will actually engage the design professional, they will go through, design the system, they have already estimated the cost, most of the procurement contracts are already in place, so they know how much these fixtures are going to cost, so they're able to estimate this very tightly and have given us what they consider a very conservative estimate that will be a cash positive, if you will, of about three thousand dollars a year for that first fourteen years and then jumps to over forty thousand dollars a year positive. So that's, that's the program. We've done quite a bit of work on it. We have a very high level of confidence that this is a very positive project for the city of Batavia. You are going to assume some debt, but the cost of that debt will be covered by through the savings of the, the project. And if we get into the project and end up being slightly more expensive, NIPA will extend that, that financing to cover that cost. Or if it becomes less expensive, they will shorten that financing and you'll start getting that bigger payback sooner or later. So the idea is from a cost of your street lighting system, that remains as is until the financing is paid off, then you can receive a large savings. But in the interim, you get the benefit of a whole brand new street lighting system that the city is maintaining older fixtures, replacing lamps, you know, the LEDs have a much longer life, things of that nature. So that's really what this project does through the New York Power Authority.
So if I get this straight, by going with the bond, replacing all the lights, it will cost us three thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twelve cents less a year than if we would have left it alone and had to maintain them ourselves and cost more electricity and so on?
Right.
And then after fourteen years, we'll realize an annual yearly savings of forty-two thousand four hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy-seven cents for as long as that system remains in, in effective use?
Correct.
You get better lighting? And brand new, right?
Yeah.
So any questions for Daltier?
Yeah, I have a question, I just dropped off a hand recently, they're sequentially improving the system, something just here. Many streets section had LEDs, arterials had sodium vapor, and then you had decorative lighting, like we had downtown, that was a different color. Is, is that being addressed to?
All the LEDs will be a white light.
Right.
So on your, your residential, you'll still have an awful lot of the sodium, which are more in the orange, but all of your, all of your downtown, the decorative lights will be changed LEDs as well as the cobrad.
In this area, it wasn't, they had two different batches of lights and sodium vapors had intersected streets and last light was right there, kind of overshadowing the LEDs.
So actually, the decorative lighting is more expensive to do, the payback would be better if we didn't do it, but it's still cash positive to do it and then it is, it's consistent, it's that white light all the way to your, your-
The eyes come adjusted to that light.
And the, your eyes- And the, your eyes, and again, without getting into the details of it, because I don't really understand it, but your eyes perceive that LED lighting differently than the sodium lighting does. I know it's something through police agencies, they, they appreciate because the, the color recognition.
Our colors are different under the sodium light, they look different. Navy blue could look black, or dark green could look red.
Exactly, so, so that part offers, you know, some positives, positives as well.
Well, if you're doing one whole section, that would have gotten our LED.
Yeah, no, that's, that's, everything on Main Street will all be switched to the LED, everything on Oak Street will be switched to the LED, Pearl Street, you know.
Eloquent?
Eloquent Street, yes.
All your arteries. All right, so are we in consensus to move that to the next business meeting for a vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Matt.
It sounds great.
That moves forward. Did you take us into executive session?
Well, indeed. Whereas Article 7, Section 105.1F of the Public Officer's Law permits the legislative body of the municipality to enter to executive session to discuss the perpetual acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, or the perpetual acquisition of securities, or sale or exchange of securities held by some public body, but holding the publicity with substantially effective value thereof. Whereas Article 7, Section 105.1F of the Public Officer's Law permits the legislative body of the municipality to enter to executive session to discuss the medical, financial credit or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city, but taking it without approval of this motion, the city council does hereby enter into executive session.
Mr. Dealey, call it, please.
Councilmember Vasina?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Perez?
Yes.
Bykowski?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.